This is our regular meeting, so I'll call up the order. First item is the Pledge of Leagues.
Pledge of Leagues to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tony is not here for the roll call, but we're all present, so I don't know if any of the formalities are going down through. And then tonight, we are going to, at this point, adjourn into Executive Session Order Number 1908-1, Act on the Request for an Executive Session pursuant to Title I, MRSAA 4056C, Regarding the Sale of Property Located at 246 U.S. Route 1, MAP U4 Lot 56 in 9 Fairfield Drive, MAP U4 Lot 66, The Public Safety Building. So with that, approval to accept the motion.
So moved.
To remove.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? So those in the audience and those at home, we're going to adjourn, and our plan is to be back here at seven-ish time.
Sure.
Yeah, we should formally schedule.
Yep.
So thank you.
And adjourn.
To Executive Session.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah.
Yeah, I'll put it on fiber.
Good evening again. Thank you. We have just come back from executive session, so we will continue with our agenda this evening. The next item on our agenda is item four, and we do have a special guest here tonight. So with that, Chief Mullen, would you like to come up and introduce us to our new member of the public safety team?
Whoa, whoa. I think many of you are probably already aware of this, but Miley Grace came to us on Monday. I think many of you are probably already aware of this, but Molly Grace came to us on Monday. And as a comfort dog, we kind of floated the idea a while back of having a dog that could stay at the station and be a comfort to our first responders that go to bad calls and so forth, and our dispatchers who are on the phone with serious calls and just need a little comfort when that's over. And also, we have, as you know, people coming in for Operation Hope and for a variety of different other traumatic events in their lives and so forth. And so we're hopeful that she will give them a little comfort as well. And we've already experienced that once. We had a lady, the first day that we had her, a lady came in and had been the victim of a crime and noticed the pen. She was aware from social media that we were getting Molly, so she pointed to the pen in dispatch and asked if we had the dog yet. So I took Molly out and sat down beside the lady and handed her over to her, and Molly cuddled right up to her and gave her some kisses on the cheek. And the lady, the tears streamed down her face, and she said, "That's exactly what I needed." So I think she's going to do the job. She's a Saint Birdoodle. Her mom was a 68-pound cross between a Saint Bernard and a full-size poodle, and the proud dad is a 14-pound miniature poodle. And this is the result, and she's supposed to be about 40 to 45 pounds. And she's been absolutely terrific so far. She's warm and cuddly, and our people have really taken to her. And she's very curious, and she likes people. That's exactly what we were looking for. There is an item on the agenda that I'll speak to later on about a little bit more about Molly, but we just wanted to have you have a chance to see her.
With that, I think Tom would like you to introduce a new member.
I do. Tough act to follow. I'm sorry, Lauren. We've also invited Lauren Dembski-Martin with us. Lauren's our new social service navigator, and we thought it was really important for the council to meet her, put a face with the name. Lauren, you want to come up? And as you walk, I'll just kind of introduce you quickly. So this is a new position in our budget this year, one that we're very pleased to have such great support from the council. So certainly one of the reasons she's here tonight. Lauren's a Scarborough resident since 2015, three kids, one in the school system, as I understand. Interesting blend of BA in criminal justice and a master's in social work, so she really has the education there and has had some really good professional experience that really brings her to this position. So we're very pleased to have her part of the team.
I just wanted to add my two cents. This was a position that we talked about at Budget Time, as I said, and having somebody who can help folks who are struggling with a variety of different issues navigate the different systems that they need to get the help that they need. And Lauren has come on board. Very pleased to have her. She's already getting referrals from our officers, and she has already been involved in some situations that she's been very helpful for. And she's been very enthusiastic about this position, so I think it's going to work out really well. We're pleased to have her.
With that, I'll open it up to general public comments, and that's for anybody who wants to comment on anything that's not on the agenda this evening. If anybody would like to come forward, please feel free to do so. I can tell the puppy is a distraction, so not seeing anybody come forward, I will close public comment. Next item on the agenda is item number five, which is minutes of the October 16th regular town council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Second. Is there any comments, discussion, edits? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Staying not present.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number six, adjustments to the agenda, and there are none this evening. Item number seven, items to be signed, treacherous warrants. I have done so and returned them to Tody. And then that brings us to order number 19077, 7:00 PM, public hearing in a second reading on the proposed amendments, Chapter 302, Scarborough Town Council Rules and Policy, Section 200. Town Council Procedures, subsection 200.8, Political Activities. I think we've had this on the agenda in the past. Does anybody need to have a refresher or any additional information about it? Katie, was that?
No, no.
Would anybody from the audience like to speak to this issue this evening with comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions or comments?
We've had quite a bit of discussion about this. I don't feel the need to get into the entire piece again, but my recommendation would be that the Rules and Policy Committee of next year, as that gets formed, consider maybe drafting something that's just very specific to behavior and activities within the council chambers. Because I think that was, in part, you know, while it was a well-intentioned policy, I think it fell down because it was a little bit vague in nature. And so something specific to that might be something good for them to look at. So I won't be here, obviously, but that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Anybody else like to comment, discussions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Seeing none. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 19082, 7:00 PM, public hearing in action on a new request for a food handler's license for Casey Perkins DBA Honeycomb Cafe located at 132 Pleasant Hill. Toby, is there any information for us?
Everything's in order. What I would recommend, I think we definitely mentioned, is that when the, they will not receive their food handlers until their occupancy is completed. This is going to be a compromise.
So with that, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this issue on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? The next item on the agenda is a proclamation. 19002, Act on the Request for a Parkings Declaring Saturday, November 30th, 2019, as a Small Business Saturday. And I think this is from a historical perspective. Tom, this is something we've usually done.
Yeah, we have in the last four or five years.
And so this really is sort of just consistent with what we've done in the past. I will read the proclamation, and it is recognizing November 30th, 2019, as a Small Business Saturday. Whereas the government of the town of Scarborough Maine celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to United States Small Business Administration, there are 30.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the United States and are responsible for 64.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2018. And whereas, small businesses employ 47.3% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, 94% of consumers in the United States value the contributions of small businesses make in their community. And whereas, 96% of consumers who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday said the day inspires them to go small, independently owned retailers or restaurants that they have not been to before or would not have otherwise tried. And whereas, 92% of companies planning promotions on Small Business Saturday said the day helps their business stand out during the busy holiday season. And whereas, 59% of small business owners said Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year. And whereas, a town of Scarborough supports our local businesses that create jobs, boosts our local economy, and preserves our communities. And whereas, advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Scarborough Town Council and the town manager does hereby proclaim Saturday, November 30th, 2019, as Small Business Saturday. And urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Signed, the date of the sixth day of November, 2019, on behalf of the Scarborough Town Council and Town Manager of Scarborough Maine. So with that, is there anybody in the audience that would like to address or speak to this issue? Again, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, discussions?
I think it's great that we're doing this. I think our local businesses can use all the support we can give them, so I think it's wonderful.
Anybody else?
Start your Christmas shopping early.
All those in favor? Thank you. The next item is Resolution 19001, Act on the Request to Support Resolution 19001 Extended Producer Responsibility, EPR for Packaging Law as Endorsed by the Legislature in 2019 to Support Municipal Recycling Programs, LD 431. And with this, I think we have two counselors that promoted this, and I don't know, I have both listed, so I'm not sure who's going to start off.
Why don't I start, and I'll throw it to Don?
Sure.
This came before the Sustainability Committee. It endorsed it enthusiastically and unanimously. Its intention is to pick up on the legislation passed by the Maine Legislature this past session to promote recycling programs. And primarily to reduce the amount of packaging that is associated with any sort of product. And placing a fee on the packaging based on the extent of it. The objective is to encourage people who are obviously packaging products to try and be as modest as they can in that regard. So that's that part of it, and Don will cover the piece from Echo Maine.
Yeah, this is also supported by Echo Maine. Mike Shaw and I have discussed this, and I want to thank Counselor Donovan and the Sustainability Committee for getting us out in front on initiatives like this. Although this will be pretty groundbreaking in terms of the, you know, this has not been passed by any other state legislature. You know, it's in place in Europe and other parts of the globe and North America and Canada, but, you know, it should be, you know, it's on the cutting edge here for us in this country. And as one of the major contributors to environmental issues, I think it's important for us to stand behind efforts like this and promote them. So that, you may think about what's happened with packaging, but, you know, a lot of producers have already gone in this direction. If you get laptops in the mail or that sort of thing, some of the technology companies are already there in terms of accepting responsibility as producers. And they certainly have the bandwidth and the capability to do that. So I support Counselor Donovan and Jamie and the Sustainability Team, along with Echo Maine and Mike Shaw in this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come up and address this issue or have comments? Again, seeing none, I'll close public comment. Is there a motion to approve this request?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any conversation, discussion? So all those in favor? Seeing none. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is old business, and there is none this evening. New business is Order Number 19083, Act to Authorize the Town Manager to Execute Any and All Documents in the Completion of the Sale of Properties Located at 246 U.S. Route 1, MAP U4, Lot 56, and 9 Fearfield Drive, MAP U4, Lot 66, pursuant to Order Number 17-115. That was approved by the town council on November 15th, 2017. And I'll let Tom give some background. We just had a discussion of this in executive session, and I'll leave Tom to bring us up to speed.
Yes, I was authorized back in November of 2017 to market the current public safety building for sale. There was a conscious discussion and decision at the time to simply go through a conventional market sale, really so we could maximize value. We are still counting on proceeds of this sale to help fund a portion of the new building next door here. So it's certainly appropriate that this matters before us now as we're within sight of actually moving in next door. That authorization allowed me to negotiate the terms of a purchase and sale agreement, the subject of which was reviewed in executive session this evening. And I'm hopeful that the council's support of the terms that have been negotiated. In essence, a couple key things. The buyer of the property is Horton LLC. This is a Portland-based developer that has a very strong track record to look to, looking at mixed-use project that will include a residential component that is intending to build for workforce housing predominantly. We expect that there'll be restaurant uses in the front of the building, the old fire station, if you will, the portion. And frankly, the remainder of the building is a bit of a mystery to at least this buyer and to many others that have looked at it. There's some challenges just with its construction type and its reuse potential. So, but based on, you know, what this buyer's done by way of due diligence, obviously they feel strongly enough to move forward with the sale. I'm pleased to say that this does deliver proceeds that actually slightly exceed what we're expecting. So we're making budgets, so to speak. It's also an extremely clean offer in that it is a cash offer, so there's no financing challenges potentially. There's a normal due diligence process that we'll be going through, and certainly things may come up. If they do, I'll certainly report those to council, and we'll see how it goes. But I'm extremely pleased with this proposal and the fact that it meets our budget requirement. So I hope you'll support approving the purchase and sale agreement.
Thank you. And with that, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this issue this evening?
Betsy Kleistin, 14 Long Meadow Road. Can you speak, thank you, can you speak to the zoning?
Yeah, I beg your pardon. I should have mentioned there are four contingencies part of this offer. The first of which requires that the whole parcel be zoned to the TDC district, which currently it's bisected by TDC. And forgive me, I don't recall, to the rear is a residential zone of one type or another. The town has tried to systematically clean up these occurrences around town where there's a zone boundary that bisects a lot. And so it's a very reasonable request. In fact, the request has been initiated through the Long Range Planning Committee and will be coming to the council shortly, probably in December. The second contingency deals with the density that's allowed. There's no special consideration. They're intending to work within the existing maintenance regulations, so there's no special requirement or request being made. Third contingency is that it's, of course, subject to the approval of this body. And the fourth one is that during the time of our occupancy, we'll keep it free and clear of any environmental hazards. We'll continue to occupy the property until we move in next door. So from my view, those are fairly simple and standard and expected contingencies.
And Tom, can you speak a little bit about just sort of the marketing activities and the interest in the market and why you think this is a?
Yeah, sure. We've tested the market for almost 20 months now, and so we feel as though we've had a good time in the market and had all sorts of interesting conversations. Produced, I think, eight bona fide offers during the course of that time. For one reason or another, I didn't advance any of those to the point of this. Many of them had extraordinary and sometimes unreasonable contingencies associated that really just, in my view, made them unworkable. So this is really appropriate that we have one that's fairly clean and meets our budget requirements. So we feel quite confident that we've given it adequate time in the market and learned a lot in that process. And I'm confident that, well, I'm not confident passing this up and waiting for a better one to come, frankly, at this point.
I'm sorry, Betsy Kleistin, 14 Long Meadow Road. I just had one more question. So you said mixed-use residential and workforce housing? Is that what you said?
The residential is predominantly what's termed as workforce housing.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else on public comment that would like to come up and speak? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Is there a motion to approve this act?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, comment? Counselor Johnson?
Are we allowed to speak about the specifics of the project a bit, Tom? Okay. So I just, I think this is a great, this is a great example of managed growth. These units are going to be incredibly small, I think somewhere between 700, approximately. 750 square feet, one bedrooms, possibly just lofts rather than a bedroom. So I think this, the vision for this project is spot on for, for the area, so I'm totally in support of this.
Yeah, I'll echo that. It's, I think, I can't think of anything, a better use for the property. Of course, the owner would have discretion to do what they choose with it, but what they're proposing and presenting would include, I think, 14 units that are workforce housing, which is, they're defining as 120% of the area median income, and they would be sold units, not rented, so there'd be, there would be ownership there. And I think it's a great vision for the property and excited to have it come before us.
Council Katerina?
Yeah, I think it's a great use. It goes along with our vision for the downtown Route 1 corridor area. And I'm really pretty excited about the fact that they are considering potentially doing a restaurant, even in that building.
A nice restaurant.
Yeah, so the combination of, you know, residential, restaurant, the walkability, all the factors we've been talking about, the comprehensive plan, I think this is a good match for that, and the price is right, so there you go.
I should mention, all of the development will be subject to the normal site plan review process. So we're talking about concepts, but they, they seem fairly confident in at least the residential component, but all of it will be subject to all the normal rigors of any other project in town.
Council Johnson?
The developer has undertaken this similar project in Portland, so there's some experience-based effort here that we expect that a lot of the kinks are already out of the project, and therefore it's probably going to go very smoothly.
And I guess, you know, I'd echo it, you know, I think lots, real estate's a lot about his timing and the right place, right time, I think. I think, as Tom has suggested, we've been in the market and, you know, we've had some offers, but they are starting to say, folks are really getting nervous about, we've kind of had an upmarket for a while now. I know a lot of corporations are starting to get nervous about what the next 12 months might bring, whether there'll be a downturn in the economy or not. So this seems like a pretty opportune time to take advantage of what's on the table. It meets a lot of our needs, it meets the budget requirements, so I think I'll echo what everybody else said. Just a last piece of information. As I recall, and Peter, you were certainly here, and you may recall, the council convened a citizens committee to work on the Public Safety Building. One of their initial tasks was to consider reuse of that property, and it's 2.1 acres or so. It's not challenging to come and go from, but through a lengthy review process, the committee advised the council that they really didn't see any current or future public use that was viable. And so that was one of the pieces that informed the decision to actually move ahead with the sale of it. So I just wanted to say that it was a careful evaluation of potential reuse for our own purposes.
So with that, everybody ready to vote? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Last item on, well, not the last, Order Number 1984 is Act on the Request from the Police Department to Receive a donation from Marla Saint Pierre and Leanne Risvera Delher in the amount of $2,500 for a comfort support dog for the Public Safety Department. I got a feeling that's, we've already met. Oh, you lost your, you lost your friend?
Yeah, we, we, she went back. Yeah, just a little bit before, I had mentioned before how, you know, what the consideration was for this animal and so forth, and how we thought that she would be used, and how she's, we thought she would help our, both our department and the citizens. So when we, when we started looking around, we looked at a number of different, different dogs and looked in shelters and lots of different places, and we finally, we finally found Marla, and we put it out on Facebook, looking for people to help name her, and we had 1,400 and something submissions that we formed a small committee and went through and identified a short list of those. One of those was Marla, which really spoke to me for a number of different reasons, one being the movie Marla and Me, I thought was a, quite a movie. But also, along the way, we had two individuals that came forward who wanted to donate money for the dog. And those people were Marla Saint Pierre, who's, I think you're all familiar with Marla, she's retired in July after 39 years with our department, always been a strong supporter of our canine program, loves, loves animals, loves dogs, and wanted to, wanted to be a part of that. And also, Leanne Risvera Delher, who, who wanted, on behalf of the Risvera family, to do something in memory of Rocky and Marcia. And so those two ladies teamed up and wanted to, wanted to make sure that we had this dog at no cost to, to the department. So we really appreciate that, and this agenda item is to ask that you would accept that donation.
We hope you do, because the dog's not going back and we don't have.
Well, maybe takers love dogs, that's the problem. Is anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this? If not, I'll close public comment. Is there a motion to approve the request, or?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd be pretty surprised that I'm going to be very enthusiastically supportive of this particular, but I did have just a question, or I'm curious. It occurred to me, maybe this is something that we would create an ongoing, I mean, there's going to be ongoing care for, dogs are expensive, and that can, things can come up, so vet care, I don't know, just something to think about. I know another group in town that might have your back, chief, is all I have to say.
It's a great suggestion. Yeah, I wanted to echo that. I think it's incredibly generous of the donors to do this for the town. But I suspect there's also a lot of other goodwill in the community, and I know that there's been a lot of gifts already received by the police department, and I think setting up some kind of fund to help with the ongoing care of Marla would be a great idea.
Council Johnson?
The name Marla is the first two syllables of Marla and Leanne, right? Okay.
You're so smart.
I just, I just figured that out.
I think it's a brilliant idea. I know way back in the day when Chief Moulton was really pushing for Operation Hope, I know Jessica Holberg and I jumped right on that, and I'm just so excited about his ability to be forward-thinking about the needs of the people who serve as first responders, as having married to one who's now retired. It can be very traumatic for people after being out at accident scenes and crime scenes and just the stuff that goes on. So I just think this is a great idea. I'd love to see all the police departments have comfort dogs as well as their wonderful canine dogs, so great idea. I fully support this.
Great. Anybody else this evening? No, I would echo too what everybody said, so I guess with that, all those in favor? Thank you.
Next item is 1985, Act on the Request to Certify the Results of Municipal Elections Held on Tuesday, November 5, 2019. This may be a contest of who has the voice.
Presented for certification by the Town Council are the election results for the municipal elections that were held on Tuesday, November 5, 2019. For Town Council, there were two seats, three-year terms. William Donovan, 1,948 votes. Betsy Gleistine, 2,810 votes. Kenneth Johnson, 2,172 votes. Robert Rowan, 1,972 votes with 664 blanks. For the Board of Education, two seats, three-year term. Alicia Giftos, 3,133. Brian Shumway, 2,218. Kristen Turner, 2,732 with 1,482 blanks. Trustee for the Sanitary District, two seats, three-year terms. Joseph Carroll with 3,434. Paul Rodriguez with 3,399, and there were 2,733 blanks. Trustee for the Sanitary District, filling a one-year term expiring in 2010, 2020, was Drew Summers, 2,801, blanks were 1,982. Question one regarding the artificial turf, the yes vote was 2,097, the no vote was 2,504, and there were 182 blanks. Question two was on the pumper truck, the yes vote was 2,497, the no vote was 2,096, and blanks were 145. Question two, question three, the land bond, sorry, yes was 2,688, the no was 1,950, the blank was 145. There were approximately 17,365 active voters on our voter registration list for this election. It doesn't include the election day registration. We had 4,783 voters who cast ballots for the November 5 election. There were 1,893 absentees issued, of which we processed 1,798. The voter turnout for this election was 28%. The swearing-in for the newly elected officials will be on Wednesday, well, for the Town Council and the Sanitary District will be November 20, 2019. For the Board of Education, as soon as the results are certified, they're sworn in, and they'll be tomorrow, because they have a meeting tomorrow night.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Is there a motion to approve and certify the results?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Council Katerina?
Yeah, I just want to congratulate everyone who won in this election. I, I'm pretty disappointed, though, with the electorate. 28% turnout's pretty low. You've got 17,365 active voters in town? Yeah, folks, you need to turn out and vote. It's, it's not only your right to do so, I think it's your duty, so hopefully, you know, people will get more involved in the future.
Thank you. Council Johnson?
Yeah, I'd just like to take this opportunity to invite the entire town of Scarborough to Thanksgiving this, this year.
To your house?
Yep. Actually, I'll be at the brand-new Council Johnson's house. Right on Juneberry.
Anybody else this evening on the election results?
Oh, boy. It's going to be a long.
That was it, that was my one. No, that was my one for two years, you'll never hear it again.
All those in favor? Item number eight is non-action items. I think we have a report out from the Finance Committee.
I heard it was a quick and brief report out.
We will do our best. In fact, we have visual aids to assist that.
It's 10 hours.
Lots of pressure here.
Councilor Hammond?
So there are two items here coming from the Finance Committee. While folks are getting set up, the first one is financial health metrics, or as we've called it alternatively, dashboard, to help us track indicators of our, of our financial health and, and directionally how it's going. So I, I'm going to turn the floor over to Larissa, who's done great work on this and has displayed great patience and perseverance despite many iterations, and it's been very helpful in terms of looking at other sources and really combing through a lot of resources to help us use this as a tool, use this as a leadership and management tool for financials, and hopefully to be reviewing it now on a, on a quarterly basis.
And can I add some color commentary or ask Larissa that? How many, how many councils and generations have you been working on this dashboard?
Oh, dear God. So you hired me, well, Tom hired me, in October of 2016, and I think we started working on this in January, February of 17. So we've been at this for quite a while.
With lots of different personalities and a lot of different faces, so.
Yes, it's true. We finally had a breakthrough in September's meeting where I was given permission to go to two pages instead of one.
Council Johnson?
It's right there. Brilliant.
Yeah, so that really took care of a lot of the angst and challenge associated with this. I do apologize for the lackluster design, not my skill set, but I think the math is probably pretty strong, and that's really why you, you know, hired me, so. The dashboard metrics, I'm sorry about the size, I'm, there we go. So page one, these metrics were discussed at, sorry, guys, at length by a couple of different councils. First set of, these are all debt-related, and these are coming out of the town's financial and fiscal policy, and the idea was to have a dashboard that in one quick look, you could see where these metrics stood for the town. The idea is to have them updated after the audit is done. The audit is usually done towards the end of the calendar year, so the idea was to have these metrics updated and presented to Finance Committee in Q1 of the calendar year, following that audit completion. So first four, debt services as a percent of annual revenues, total debt as a percent of full state valuation, debt per capita, and total debt per capita as a percent of per capita income. The dashboard continues down, the, if there is a goal or a limit that's listed in the financial and fiscal policy, it is shown in the row below the first indicators. If it's a green arrow, it means we're heading in the direction of that goal. If it's a red arrow, it means that we are heading away from the goal. It also shows a three-year average of where we've been, so you can get a sense of, of what that looks like over time. And then the next two boxes, these are also decided on in the last couple of months here. The idea is to take these same metrics and look at both what we're calling a fiscal cohort and a main cohort. So the GFOA is the Governing Finance Officers Association, and they release each year a set, a data set that includes all of the municipalities in the United States and Canada that have won the award for excellence in financial reporting, which the town of Scarborough has won now 13 years in a row. And so it seems like a good cohort to look to for similar reporting styles. Able to narrow it down to communities in New England that have between 10,000 and 30,000 residents, and when putting Scarborough into that cohort, we actually hit the median for both population and median household income, which really, I think, does give support for it being a decent fiscal cohort for us to be looking at. The next one down will be the main cohort, and that will be based off of some work that the school board did a couple of years ago, creating a cohort of communities in our nearby area here in the state of Maine. Those numbers are not filled out yet. The Finance Committee gave permission to wait until their January, February meeting to fill those out. I'm going to need to get the data in and work with it. The final piece on this is looking at each metric's risk score, and this was a little bit of recent work. The idea being, we can give you the number of, of what each of those metrics is coming in at, but what does that mean in the long run? So let's go back so you can actually see the numbers we're talking about. And what is 12.97% of, is debt services as a percent of annual revenues? Is that a good place to be? Are we, what would happen if we weren't there? And so this risk score is really about, and it was done this year with myself assessing the risk and our municipal advisor, Joe Gutierrez, assessing the risk, but the Finance Committee will need to establish a broader base of people to be assessing this risk, maybe the chair of the Finance Committee, the town manager, council chair, as well as the municipal advisor continuing. And each of these metrics was given as two scores between 1 and 5. The first one being, how likely is it that we will move away from our goal? One being not likely, five being highly likely. And the second one being, if we did move away from our goal, what would the financial impact to the community be? One being no real impact, and five being a significant impact. And then those two scores are multiplied together. So if you have, so let's say that there, let's use one of the lowest, the lowest score we have here on this chart is unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of revenues. So both Joe and I felt like there was not all that much chance of that happening in any great degree, and if it did, our, our immediate or even our, our moderate future financial health would not be severely impacted. So it ended up being multiplying the, our two scores together, each of us having our scores multiplied, that two five-point scores, and then averaging them together, 1.5 out of 25. I know that that's a lot of words that I've just tossed out at you. You do have a memo, I believe, in your packet that kind of summarizes this so that it's easier to understand, maybe in written form than in verbal. So the risk assessment is really just there to help people understand what we think is both the likelihood and the impact of these metrics, should they head in the wrong direction. And then those risk factors were used to kind of come up with this gauge at the bottom here. Kind of the, there was a, for the first two years of this work, there was a lot of interest in having this particular style of gauge so that you could kind of quickly get an idea of where we stood, and this is reflecting those risk scores on average. And then the final piece over here in the bottom is, we do have debt limits that are both established by the state as well as our financial and fiscal policy, and this will just be updated each year to allow folks to quickly see where we currently stand as far as what we are, what we are allowed to by policy take on for debt. And so if you'll look, you can see that the fiscal and financial policy gives a total debt of 8.5% of our, I believe, total value can be held in indebtedness. a total debt of 8.5 percent of our, I believe, total value can be held in, um, indebtedness, and we are currently holding 2.5 percent. And you'll see in that far column what a debt margin is, is how much, how many dollars are still available by policy. No one's recommending we do so, but still available by policy to be bonded. And currently, according to our policy, we could still take out another $243 million worth of indebtedness. Um, and just kind of scrolling back up to those last four metrics, um, we have unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of revenues, non-property tax revenue as a percentage of assessed value, general fund expenditure as a percentage of assessed value, and then the last one is a qualified applicant for the tax assistance program, and that's our senior property tax relief program. Any questions?
Impressive.
Ms. Hammond?
Thanks, Larissa. So I think as a, just as a management tool, one footnote here is that, uh, you know, if you look at the, the debt figures, you know, those are, there's lots of additional room for us to borrow more debt, but the, I think the, you know, for example, uh, you know, one learning here is that despite of that, we have some problem areas for us to focus on, uh, both in the short and the long term. So that's the intent of this, is to help direct us, uh, for focusing on a couple of priorities to try to address in the upcoming budget cycle and our other longer-term planning activities. Thank you.
Counsel Johnson? Do, do we have a date that this would go live for the public? It's not, it's not there yet, right? Because we want to fill in some of these.
Absolutely not.
Right.
So these are, these are reflecting the audit from 2018, and they don't have any of the cohort data in.
Yeah, right.
So I, we can certainly put this up if you wish us to, but it will remain blank until, uh, that cohort data has come in, and we do have to purchase that data every year. So I, my preference would be to wait until January, February, when we update it with the most recent numbers to make it go live, and then it would be housed, I think, on both the, it could be put in the part of the website where the finance committee information is, but it should also go on the finance department's section of the website under their accounting.
Sure. Great.
So just, uh, put a, a little color to that. Uh, our goal would be ultimately to move this out of non-action land into something that the council will actually would vote on and then confirm its use and timing for that. So, um, that, that is something that is our intent and will be the focus of, of the committee work coming forward.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think the intent was to share the work product today, and if there's any comments or thoughts, let us know. But our intent was to make it easy in a two-pager, not a one-pager, for us as, you know, that not are, that are not way down in the weeds in the financial to say, okay, where are we going, how are we doing? But more importantly, also something for the public to look at. So we're all on the same page, and we start talking about debt or whatever it may be. And this has been a labor, I wouldn't say it's a labor of love for you.
Oh, come on now, it's been nothing but joy.
Yeah. But for someone who's been on the finance committee my whole time on the council, it's like, it's finally got through the, through the wickets, so I'm, I'm happy.
And honestly, if, if all of the finance committee members are happy, I'm sure the rest of the council will have no further suggestions of how to modify.
Can't get it.
You all look, I'm well played.
Thanks very much, Larissa. Thank you for your great work on this and your persistence. Thank you.
So there is one other item on that, in this non-action section, uh, coming out of finance, and that is, uh, we've been working over the past several months, uh, together with our counterparts on this, the board of ed side of the House, um, in a series of workshop meetings, uh, we've been holding them roughly once, uh, once a month for the past four, four or six months or so. I'm pleased to report that we're, um, ready to make a, a recommendation or a joint resolution for the council to deliberate on, to vote on, actually, as an action item, uh, in the next, uh, town council meeting. Basically, reflecting on last year's performance, it was well-accepted that we struggled with, uh, an approach to try to, uh, hit a target in the first reading, and for a variety of reasons, we discovered we were, uh, not really focused on, on all of the measures that we might, number one, and number two, uh, it wasn't necessarily lead us in, leading us in the direction of the ultimate goal, which we've used over the past several years of a, roughly, uh, no greater than a 3 percent mill rate increase. So over the course of this, these discussions, um, the, the committee's gonna be coming forward with a recommendation that we add another measure, that we add a measure for the first reading that would be achievable and, and able for both the town and the schools to, to plan and to, to hit, and, and that would be a, a net, a, a net budget target. Um, and we, we have some figures that we'll be sharing that, this, that explains the range of that over the past several years, but generally, that has been in the neighborhood of, of 2 to 3 percent for the town and 5, 5 to 6 percent for the, for the school. So, uh, we'd be doing that as a first, first pass exercise on, on the way of ultimately getting the, the mill rate, uh, to that target of, of less than 3 percent. So now, all of this is advisory in nature, uh, but we're, we thought the discussions were very fruitful and helped us, uh, I know particularly on the town side, to understand some of the pressures the schools were under, in particular with not having a lot of data on funding, uh, and not being really able to execute a target that, um, that we were hoping to set, uh, in the past budget cycle. So this, this will also be continuing work, but, uh, we're, I just wanted to frame out the elements of that at this meeting, and we will actually have a, a formal document to present to the council on the 20th of November for, for a vote.
And I guess for, you know, sort of, just as a member of the finance committee and to Don, but what, what we heard was we had a target of, of, you know, a tax rate increase of 3 percent. Well, we didn't give to each individual's side of the budgeting, the school and the town, a net margin target, and that's what we tried to work through. And those numbers that Don just shared is historically where the town has come in, where the school budget has come in, which has produced a 3 percent or lower tax increase. So for the school, it really gave them some peace of mind that if they had that target, the net margin target, which they can manage, that should produce what we're looking for. So it gives them a little bit more of a goalpost to work toward in that first reading.
And we expect this will be a unanimous recommendation from both, from the town and, and also the school, which, which in itself, we feel is a, is a major accomplishment heading into our budget cycle.
Anybody else want to follow? Any, do you sense?
No, I, look, I, I think those, um, you know, Don and probably not the most popular guy in the room wanting to meet every month for a joint finance, but I, but I'll tell you what, it was, it was very fruitful. I thought it was a great exercise, and as someone who has been relatively vocal about, um, the shortcomings, in my view, of the 3 percent target, uh, I feel like we walked out of there with every party at the table feeling better about the process. Um, and, um, and I, I'm, I'm happy that the, the school side is as, just as enthusiastic about this as, as, as we are. So I, I think it's a great step in the right direction, and it, it's gonna make the communication piece a lot easier at first read, I believe, so. Well done.
So with that, I think those were both. Anybody else have any questions, comments for Counsel Holden?
Um, well, I probably shouldn't just keep my mouth shut since it's my last meeting, but, um, I love the concept. I caution the, like, when, when you, when it comes out to me that says we're gonna vote on this at the next meeting, um, and you have, you have two brand-new counselors being sworn in and not necessarily having conversations or time to work, I, I might push it out a couple meetings. I might ask you to think about that, maybe present it in one way and then, and give some time, because if I've learned anything over my three years, it's that we, we want to make change, which is great, and I think this is really positive change, and I love that you're out in front of it, but give it some time to marinate and give people some time to get on board, because that's gonna make everything easier in the end. So, um, and I know I wasn't at your meetings, and I know you did a ton of work on it, but you did a ton of work in that small microcosm versus, uh, including everybody, and you've got two brand-new faces, um, filling seats who, uh, so, anyway, it just.
Appreciate the tactical suggestion. We'll take that under advisement. Thank you.
Perfect. So with that, I think that concludes that non-action item discussion. Next item is item number nine, standing in special committee reports. Um, I don't know if, which end of the table, anybody wanna volunteer to go first? Sure. Sure.
So I, I have the community center advisory committee with Paul, and Paul will fill in any blanks that I, that I missed. The committee can, continues to meet weekly. Uh, they have completed the survey work and analysis, which received a surprisingly robust response from the community. There was just over 1,800, um, responses to the survey that was distributed online and through, um, paper at town hall at various areas across town. One of the questions that we posed to the committee, uh, through the charge was to gauge the public's, uh, interest in a swimming pool, and I think the survey very clearly shows that there's significant interest in a swimming pool and, in, uh, having a swimming pool in Scarborough. There's a lot of other insights that can be gained from the survey that will help the committee as they move forward with the next steps, which is coming up with a design with Edge, um, that might incorporate a community center into the facility that they're planning to build. And, uh, and then there'll be some analysis on the financials associated with that. So, um, the first step was, uh, very well-received in general and provided a lot of good insights, and, uh, very happy with the committee work to this point. They're under a tight timeline, and, uh, I think we all knew that when we, when we said it, and, and they understand that. But so far, I think they're doing really good, quality work, so I'm happy.
Is that it?
That's all I have, yeah.
Yeah, uh, to add to that, I think it's, I, I've said this, I believe, every single meeting, but just to reiterate, uh, th- this is a process, and we don't know what it looks like right now. So I think it's, it's important that, um, we have this group of people that are putting in a ton of time and gathering a ton of information, and, uh, we're nowhere in the place to discuss decision-making right now. It's, it's literally just been a very fruitful po- process to, to see what the community wants and to see if, if this is the right fit. Um, and I, and I have to, um, commend the, um, the Edge guy, the Edge guys and Rocky. They've been to every single meeting. Some combination of the groups have been there, and they've been active in the process, and they've been asked, uh, they're willing to answer every question we've thrown at them, which at times are, you know, not easy questions, so that's been great. On my side, for the BOE, the, the building steering committee for the possibility of a new, uh, consolidated school, I believe they have met two times at this point. Uh, I have met with, uh, the chairperson, Ms. Casalionis, and requested that we somehow get a town council liaison onto that committee, uh, which might not entail rewriting the charge, but amending it or, or some sort of process. Everybody has seemed receptive to that, so it should be my goal by next, next, next meeting to perhaps we discuss who is the, the liaison for that committee. A little bit of clarification with that, I, the steering committee is then going to create a charge for a building, a, a more specific building committee once, once they're done with their work. So there's essentially a committee to form a committee, um, which continues my love of local government. But the, um, so, yeah, we, that's where we are with that. Like I said, I, I've approached the BOE, they, they've been receptive. We should have a liaison by, I don't know if they're meeting weekly, but I would, I would guess we're gonna have a liaison within a week or two or after this next council meeting with a new council.
Um, for me, just the communications committee, I wanted to thank Larissa Crockett for a lovely send-off. It was my last official committee meeting, and I arrived to pierogi and grapes and cheese and some cider, and it was very sweet, and I really appreciated that, so, um, thank you very much. Uh, as far as committee work, we did discuss, uh, the future of the roundtables. Uh, they were not particularly effective this year. There is, um, some discussion as to whether or not they should move forward in a quarterly fashion or on an issue-based, uh, as needed, um, but I'm gonna leave that for the future committee to decide. I think the crux for me is everyone agreed that communication is hugely important, but not able to really get teeth into that, in how that committee can positively affect the council's work and support the town. So there's still a lot of discussion ahead regarding that, and I trust you guys will carry it forward. Thank you.
So Catalina?
Yeah, um, ordinance committee, I, we've, I mentioned that we finally hammered out a draft of the potential marijuana ordinance, which took quite a bit of doing, as Counsel Hamel will attest to. Uh, it was like putting, um, threading a needle, shall we say? Um, we've had a, one meeting, I'm looking at Larissa today, that, uh, Counsel Hamel said was pretty well-attended. Um, Counsel Hamel, how many people went to the marijuana information?
Well, I, I think that we had between a half a dozen to a dozen people.
Okay.
And it's the beginning, I think, of, we're gonna start to see the public come out to the scene here as we get closer to.
Yeah.
Town council review and discussion.
And we're gonna have another one next Tuesday at 6 o'clock here at, um, town hall. Uh, I can make this, I could make today's, but I, uh, will definitely be there next week. We do want, you know, some more public information, and then it will come up to the council for, for, uh, work. And I think that's all I had to report on at this point.
Counsel Johnson?
Pest management committee, Matt. Uh, this is a very dedicated, uh, group of individuals. They're very committed to, uh, trying to advance the concepts of, uh, organic, uh, organics for managing, uh, gardens and, and lawns. Uh, they are developing an impressive education program. Uh, I was very impressed by, uh, the first draft that was circulated at the meeting last week. Uh, they have, uh, are in, now in the process and are finalizing the report to the town council of the committee's efforts over the last six years. Uh, they're quite ready to render that report to the town council and hopefully do it as a part of a workshop this fall. Thank you.
Counsel Hamel?
A couple of items on appointments committee. Uh, we've been working with Liam Gallagher, and he's been helping us to, uh, to confirm the timeline and the process that will be following for, uh, the, the town managers' performance evaluation and employment agreement renewal, which is gonna be coming up in the next cycle. So we, uh, will plan to, uh, to review this, uh, in the, in the next town council meeting on November 20th. Uh, this is a little time-bound, so we do have deadlines on this one that we have to, that we have to stick to. Um, so we'll be looking forward to that work, and I've appreciated his health and help and support throughout in that effort. There are public and private aspects to that, and we'll be careful to make sure that any of the, you know, terms and details and the actual renegotiation of the contract would be, you know, taking place, uh, you know, in a private setting and other, other aspects retaining primarily through the timing and the steps in the process, we will be sharing them publicly. The other thing I would say is that we're gearing up for the next cycle of appointments, uh, for various committees that we have in town. There are, um, dozens of committees that we have, and, um, it's, these, this is really where the, you know, the gears of the, of the machine work, and we need, uh, good talent and people that are committed to put in long hours to help with that. So Todi will be helping us to communicate, uh, that upcoming cycle, and we'll look forward to hitting the ground running to try to get those vacancies filled as quickly as possible with, with talent. And I'd like to reflect on the ad hoc community center effort as a good example of the sort of talent that we have in our own community. I mean, we have highly skilled people who are experts in a number of areas, and, um, I think it, uh, is a great opportunity for us to tap into that talent pool and to get folks like that engaged and involved.
Thank you. And with that, I guess, town managers, for it, Tom?
Sure. Couple of quick points of interest, I hope. Um, as the council, I think, is aware and the, the public, uh, we have struggled for some time now with our recycling program in many facets, but, uh, among that, we've had a number of locations around town. We used to have three locations for excess recycling, uh, which really ended up being critical for some folks, particularly those that live in condos, but also those of us that on a weekly basis might have an overflow of cardboard or what have you. There really needs to be a place to, to bring that material. We used to be at Walmart in Hannaford. We've both been nicely asked to, to find another location, and understandably so, it's, it's a kind of a messy operation, so to speak. So we've been limited to, for some time now, to one location down here on Route 1, uh, just across the way here by the main veterans home, and we've tried any number of variations to deal with the ongoing issues of contamination and really containment. The material blows around and it's, uh, on one hand, the site is ideal because it's fully exposed, and we think that's a deterrent, um, to, to bad behavior, but on the other hand, it's fully exposed and everyone can see what's going on there. And not surprisingly, the, uh, the butters aren't terribly pleased with having that kind of operation. So, uh, after long thought, we, we are proposing to relocate that down to Public Works. It will be, um, not behind the gates, so it's accessible. It will be not behind the gates, so it's accessible. The downside, obviously, is that it's a bit off the beaten path, but we also have fairly constant activity down there with personnel. Our fuel pumps are there, so police and school buses are in the area pretty thoroughly. So we don't see any depletion in service. It's just going to be an alternative location. So we're looking to make that switch as of December 1st and we'll be doing all sorts of messaging around that. Our challenges continue with respect to contamination in that waste stream and historically that has not been a problem, but EcoMaine, for very good financial reasons, has been keeping very close attention to contaminated loads and there's extra costs associated depending on the volume, the amount of contamination. So it's a continuing challenge for us, but we think that's going to be a better location for us. I should also mention selfishly for us, particularly on a Monday morning, Public Works will spend two or three hours on a Monday morning just cleaning up for, you know, the weekend's activity. We're there on a daily basis during the workday and we can manage it. For them to move the equipment and it's often several pieces of equipment from Public Works to this location is more time than expense. So having it right on site will be able to attend to the need far more efficiently and cost-effectively. I wanted to mention, simply because it was mentioned in these chambers, the town was considering refunding some of our existing debt. The bond market looked favorable late summer, early fall. During the course of our process here, though we moved, I think, as quickly as we could, the markets changed again. And so at this point, we'll not be pursuing that refunding. It does not make financial sense for us to do so. We'll continue to watch the market and come back with you, to you, with any opportunities that we are aware of. Tomorrow, we are convening for second round interviews for the assessor position. This is an important position, as you all know. Pleased that we have some very viable candidates. We did invite Councillor Clucci to be part of that process. He has accepted and I think we'll be there as part of the interview team tomorrow. And perhaps when you get back together in two weeks, we'll be able to announce the appointment of the new assessor. That's my hope. Also, to put on your calendar, as many of you are aware, in the credit enhancement agreement with Scarborough Downs, with the Downs Project, we negotiated, among other things, an annual reporting requirement, a public report. And we've actually set a date for December 18th for that to occur. So I'll work with future council chair about the logistics, but it was important for them and for us to get a date on the calendar. And that will be interesting enough to the day that the CEA was approved, coincidentally. And lastly, I certainly want to congratulate and thank Katie and Bill for their service and it's been a pleasure working with you. Given the interest and commitment we have with the community, I know you won't be strangers. You'll probably be doing committee work and pleased to continue working in that capacity. And certainly congratulate and welcome our new councillors-elect, Gleystein and Johnson. I'll be reaching out to you and looking to get together, if we can, to go through some orientation and look forward to working with you. Thank you. And I guess I'll add to, this evening, we certainly knew, excuse me, we certainly knew Katie clearly made her intentions known that she was not running again, but with some of the changes, what we're going to do is at the next council meeting, have a more formal sort of thank you and appreciation for both.
They just can't get enough of us, Bill, and want us to come back, is what they're saying.
So we will kind of circle that wagon next time and kind of say our thanks and appreciation for all that both have done over the years, so thank you.
So with that, I think it's now councillor member comments. Start at this end of the table, councillor.
So I just wanted to thank the town staff and Toady's group in particular for executing in a long series of elections. You know, you make it look easy, we know it's not, not easy at all. And also doing a great job of wrestling with the technology, so really appreciate it. And I know we owe a debt of gratitude to you and to the other folks that support that effort, so thank you.
Councillor?
Just want to address, I'm glad to see the chief in the audience. My term expires with this meeting and I want to thank my fellow councillors for their cooperation over these years, as well as the town staff, all of whom have been exceedingly supportive over the years. And I won't name each one because I have not met a single staff member who hasn't been completely supportive and it's a very, town is blessed to have so many fine public servants. In fact, I've met so many great people in the Scarborough community the past six years, it really has been one of the highlights of having served. And I look forward to serving the town again in any way I can. Scarborough has a great future and I encourage folks out there to participate in town government. It's a very, very rewarding exercise, so thank you.
Councillor Kerry?
Yeah, I have my comments written also as, since this is really the last day of this current council. And I wanted to thank Peter for services chair this year. God love you for doing that job. It's not easy, having served as vice chair before myself. Also wanted to thank Katie for her service on the council. Your hard work and dedication has been much appreciated and serving as vice chair this year. And I particularly wanted to thank Mr. Donovan for his six years of service to the town. He's done a yeoman's work, as far as I'm concerned. I know he spent a lot of time in Tom's office, much to Tom's dismay, and I'm just not being funny about that, but anyway, he did, he, I've worked with a number of councillors in different councils and he just went above and beyond a good part of the time. And I know he took a lot of grief and aggravation from some people in town. That's what happens when you're willing to do the work and get out there and try to make differences. I couldn't begin to list the number of contributions he's made to the town. To me, one of the top ones that I was just like, wow, was the senior tax rebate program that he came up with with another citizen in town, which the state of Maine, I've served on the Legislative Policy Committee since I've started on the council and we were the envy of every other town in Maine regarding that. The development programs we've done, getting Scarborough Downs off the ground, the public safety building, I mean, just, I could go on and on and on. He's a tireless worker. He's a great friend. I know there's a misconception out there with the public that town councillors don't get along, but we really do. I mean, it's just the nature of the job. If you don't get along, you can't get anything done. But we do. So I want to thank Bill for his service and I am very, very envious of the fact that I'm sure you'll be spending a lot of time down South golfing while the rest of us are up here struggling with the winter, so thank you.
As I did most of the day today.
Yeah, rub it in.
Councillor Foley?
Yeah, I guess share a lot of the sentiments that have already been said, but I want to thank the town citizens themselves for entrusting me to serve. It has been an honor and a privilege and not one that I take for granted. Also want to thank my fellow councillors, past and present. You know, despite our disagreements, I have a deep respect for anybody who steps up to do it because it's not the fame and money and glory, I can tell you that. It is a lot of hours, a lot of times when you're just, you don't really want to sit down and read that packet, but you know you need to, and a lot of commitment. So I have a deep respect for everybody who has served and will serve. And certainly congratulations to Betsy and Ken. Wish you the best of luck. Ken, I suggest you take that seat down here and Betsy, you'll be better suited here, is my, you know, thoughts on that. And let's keep the Johnson voice apart, right? And then also, I wanted to thank Tom and town staff, as has already been mentioned, always available to help guide us through, you know, learning how to, the first year especially, when you're learning to draft an amendment or following Robert's rules and all of the kind of things that you just don't think about when you run for council. All of a sudden, you're sitting back and go, oh God, what do I do? Do I second that? Do I, you know? So the patience and guidance with that is much appreciated. And that's really it. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Councillor?
Yeah, so I'll lay it on a little bit thick as well, so we'll. So Katie Foley, first of all, you were one of the primary reasons why I ran for council.
I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, I know, yeah. Just when I got more involved in town politics and I listened to your unwavering integrity and willingness to speak your mind, whether people agreed or not, I think that you've, there's some, not only in your commentary, but in your votes, I mean, you were the deciding vote for the CEA. There, I mean, you've made some very tough decisions and you're not afraid to go with what you truly believe, so I have an immense amount of respect for that. You are also my council mother. You did kick me when I was supposed to raise my hand or tell me, so that was useful. Once I got on council, Bill, I learned more from you than anybody else. I mean, I really enjoyed our times together, our meetings and having tea at Fohung. You have a brilliant mind and you, you know, it's, things at executive session, the points that you bring up, the thoughts that you think, it's very, it's very clear that you're moving the conversation forward and getting us, challenging us to think of different angles. So I have a deep respect for the work that you've done here. So to both of you, thank you and I think you guys should enjoy some much-needed relaxed time, so.
We shall.
Yeah.
So I didn't know any of you before I joined the council and I didn't watch a lot of meetings, so I didn't really know what to expect.
Would you have made a different decision?
Maybe. But I can say, being on this side of the desk and spending some time with all of you, everybody brings their own attributes to the table and talents and skills and I have a lot of respect for both Bill and Katie. And a deeper appreciation for the skills and talents that they bring and have brought to the table here. So I think it's a sad day, right? I haven't known you for that long, but now we have to go and do some new things and welcome some new members, Betsy and Ken, to the table and learn from them and see what talents and skills they can bring to the table. Change is the spice of life and it's a core part of our democracy, so I'm sad and excited for what lies ahead. Thank you.
And I guess for me, I'll certainly echo everything that has been said and both councillor Foley and Donovan, thank you for your service and I think you've really made a difference to the town. You think back in time and sort of the issues we've addressed and other things, so thank you. And I, you know, again, I'll echo and then I'll kind of turn to our community and really this is kind of a message, I had written this today, but I think it's really telling. So what I'd say is, you know, congratulations to the winning candidates all across the board and also thank you for all the other candidates. It is really a daunting task to run for office. It takes significant investment of time and emotions and resources and I'm pretty sure you guys are both exhausted after coming through the process you have. So anybody that will step up, and so for me, our democracy is really dependent on individuals stepping forward to run for elected positions, to provide a choice to voters about who they think is going to best represent them in whatever it is that they do. I think that's really important. And so what I would really plead this year, I've been through sort of five cycles of this, for me, it was a particularly challenging sort of electoral season and that's because I think it's the power of social media. And there were just, this year in particular, some very active social media campaigns that went from first discussing simple differences of opinions, which are fine, to kind of argue or talk about difference of opinions, but it started to go into candidates' personal attacks and attacking individuals and in some cases even attacking their children. And I think that's really kind of a bridge too far, a line that's crossed. So my message is, I really hope going forward, we can all agree to disagree civilly, do it respectfully, do it based on viewpoints and not vilify the candidates that are running that are trying to do what they think is in the best interest of the town from their perspective. And I know some say this is only politics, there's a saying, you know, all is fair and love and war, and apparently, politics. And some say, well, it's just politics, it doesn't matter. Tomorrow, everybody forgets it. And I will say, I can't speak for others, but last spring, my son, who had some issues at the time, was targeted by somebody for political gain and said some things that were really untrue about my son. And it came at a really difficult time. And for me, I don't forget that and it's hard to forgive that. When you are targeting a child of a parent that you disagree with or where there's some issue, and I just, it's really an appeal to our community. Let's be civil, let's agree to disagree respectfully. We're on a new pathway, so let's, as we have said, let's make the most of it. But it's up to all of us to change sort of the culture in our community so we can agree to disagree civilly and exchange ideas and move forward. So with that, I guess I'll conclude. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved. I want to do it one last time.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't vote, second. I don't know who's seconded, but.
John.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
Eighteen. Nope, no, it's passed. It's Clucci, which means you two.